You're, you're, you're still cutting out, but yes, I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Soltes.
President.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan. Okay, uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
Present. I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Here.
Okay. Uh, so we have four. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of this. Um. This eighteenth twenty forty two, okay, motion. Commissioner.
Commissioner Krosak, I, I think if everybody else is, I, if everybody could just nod their heads if everybody else is having a hard time hearing Commissioner Krosak as well. I wonder, Commissioner, if you could maybe log out and log back in and see if maybe you get a better connection that way, and then we could
Okay.
Start up again. Really, really broken up.
Okay.
I would suggest maybe logging, just logging out of the meeting and logging back in potentially and seeing if you get, end up with a better connection that way. Sometimes that'll, sometimes that sorts it out.
Carl, can I be heard all right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I asked because my, my video is kind of jerky.
Oh, okay. No, you, we're not seeing that on our end.
Okay.
Welcome, Commissioner Jordan. Just having some technical difficulties here and we'll, uh, we just got through attendance, so.
Sounds good. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, boy, it still sounds pretty, pretty broken.
I don't think you are quite logged off.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe close out the app altogether and.
Oh, Carl, when are we resuming face-to-face meetings? This might not happen.
You know, we just had, uh, we just had a meeting about that and, uh, uh, we have, um, our city clerk, Josh Stecker, with us here today, so he'll, he'll be able to address that when, uh, when we get into his presentation, Commissioner Soltes.
Okay, better now.
Still sounded a little choppy. I think, you know, you're, what, it looks like you're still logged into the meeting. Your screen goes dark. Uh, and then it just says you're coming back and connecting to audio. Uh, but it, but it looks like you're still logged in. I think if you maybe log out and log all the way back in.
Okay, I can do that. I have a problem here with this computer that I don't have a way to log out.
There should be a leave button.
Yeah.
Down in the right-hand, uh, corner, there should be a red button that says leave. No.
Well, now you're muted.
It's showing on my other computer and see if I can log in that way.
Okay.
If you just sign me out from here, I will try to log in there.
Okay. Let's give Commissioner Krosak a couple of minutes here to get the technical difficulties sorted out. I would say we could just move forward, but we can't because, uh, Commissioner Krosak, technically the chair at the moment, you kind of need him to lead the lead the next phase here of, uh, electing officers. Anyone wanting to make the case for meeting in person again, I think we've got a pretty good, uh, study right here. Commissioner Soltes.
I read some, something that said you're gonna have to, have to do both face-to-face and internet in the future.
That's correct.
So unfortunately, I guess you could still have technical difficulties, but carry on with the meeting.
Yeah, that's just it.
Okay, uh, I'm on a different computer right now. Is that better?
Oh, crystal clear, Commissioner Krosak. Very, very good.
Okay, fantastic. I apologize for that. Uh, I was using the computer that I normally use and it just doesn't seem to be working right. Okay, so, uh, we'll go to the approval of minutes. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any, uh, changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, the next item, well, actually, it's not an item on the agenda, but I want to welcome our new members to the, uh, commission. That's, uh, Commissioner Snodgrass and Commissioner Jordan. Welcome to both of you. Uh, this has been a very good body, uh, and we look forward to having you as part of our members. I also want to express my thanks and appreciation to our departing members. Uh, that's Greg, Amanda, and, um, gosh, I'm having a, uh, momentary brain here. Uh, uh, but anyway, our departing members, uh, who work very hard and diligently on this commission. And I think I speak for all of us when I say that I appreciate all of their efforts and the work that they did on this body and, uh, they will be missed. So with that.
I, I would just note it was, uh, Shannon Greina was the.
Shannon Greina. My, my apologies to Shannon because, uh, being seventy-two years old, every once in a while, something just goes oof. And, uh, it's, uh, it's part of the headache of, uh, growing older. Okay, we are now at the public comment portion of our meeting. And, uh, commenters will be allowed three minutes per individual unless revised by the chair. In-person comments shall be made first, giving the speaker's name and address. When there are thirty seconds remaining, staff will alert you to summarize your comment. At the end of your comments, staff will notify you that it has come to the end of your comment period. Anyone making out-of-order comments may be subject to removal. Public comments may be made remotely via Zoom or by phone during the designated portions of the meeting. To speak during the meeting, press the raise hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press nine on your phone. Please refrain from raising your hand until the chair has announced that the commission has opened the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or the last three digits of your phone number will be called out when it is your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. All speakers may have three minutes to speak. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific commissioner. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage or discuss in any comment or personalities or indulge in any derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any commissioners, the chair, or any member of the staff or the public. There will be no demonstrations during or during or at the conclusion of any public comment. These guidelines are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public meeting to give every person an opportunity to be heard and ensure that no individuals are embarrassed by voicing their opinions. Okay, do we have anyone, uh, showing up tonight that wishes to comment? Okay, apparently not. So hearing done, then we will move on to the, uh, next portion of the meeting. And, uh, that would be the, uh, uh, agenda item nomination and election of chair and vice chair. So we will open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Commissioner Krosak to take over as the, the chairman of the organization.
Okay, uh, is there a second of the nomination?
I would second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll close the nominations and, uh, we'll ask for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of Commissioner Krosak as chair, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we need a vice chair. So any nominations for vice chair?
I think, uh, Commissioner Krosak, if I could, I think, uh, Commissioner Jordan, uh, may have a question.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I, um, I just wanted to confirm that Commissioner Krosak actually wanted to be the chair. And I assume you do, uh, but I just wanted to confirm that before we voted you in, but, uh, since that vote's already passed, I'll, I'll refrain.
Uh, well, uh, thank you, Commissioner Jordan. I, I appreciate that. And yes, I, I will accept the, the appointment here. Uh, I know, uh, our previous chair was, did an excellent job and he will be a hard act to follow, but I will do my best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any nominations for vice chair? Commissioner Jordan?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wanted to see if maybe, um, while folks were noodling on whether or not they wanted to be vice chair, if the city staff wanted to provide, uh, I've got the, the minute or the, um, the bylaws here, but what's the role of the vice chair?
Uh, so the vice chair, Commissioner Jordan, uh, would, uh, fill, really, uh, just fills in for the chair, uh, if the chair is absent, um, for the meeting. So the vice chair's role is really just to run the, run the meetings, uh, if in, in, in the instance that, um, the chair is unavailable and in some cases or, and/or if the chair is, uh, no longer with the commission, um, which is the case currently and why Commissioner Krosak was started running this meeting as the vice chair, so.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I will step out. I, I don't know if Commissioner Soltes is interested. Um, but I personally think he would make a good, uh, vice chair and, and would nominate him for the position.
Do we have a, a second for the, uh, Commissioner Soltes?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Soltes, are you willing to accept nomination?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and call for a vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Soltes as vice chair, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we move to the next item. That is the bylaws review. And I guess Josh, that's your item.
Commissioner Krosak, uh, sorry, Josh, if, if I could just step in really briefly, now that we have, um, now that we have chair, vice chair elected, uh, maybe this would be a good time to introduce, uh, or give the new commissioners an opportunity to introduce themselves and maybe other commissioners to kind of give a brief overview of themselves. I know we're not in the same room, so it's sort of awkward to get to know each other, but maybe in an effort to know each other just a little bit, um, that might help before we get into any of the agenda items. And just a suggestion, Commissioner Krosak.
Uh, thank you, Carl. I really appreciate that. I was going to do that previously. And, uh, with the technical difficulties, it slipped my mind. So, uh, Commissioner Snodgrass, do you want to start out by telling us a little bit about yourself and, uh, why you were interested in joining the commission?
Hi, I'm Ally Snodgrass. I am, well, I've been back in the harbor for about five years. I am, uh, a commercial real estate appraiser. And I wanted to be able to put my skills to use to serve my community. Pretty much as simple as that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So our other new member, Commissioner Jordan, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanted to join the commission.
Hey, well, thank you very much and thanks for the opportunity to, to say hi to everybody. Looking forward, um, to meeting you all in person. Yeah, like Commissioner Snodgrass, uh, I've been here, uh, about thirteen years in the harbor now and, uh, raised my two kids. I have a freshman in high school and a junior in high school and, um, I just really wanted to make a difference for my community. This has been a great community for, for me and my family and, um, wanted to get back a little bit. I work for the Ports of Seattle and Tacoma and the Northwest Seaport Alliance. I manage their environmental and planning programs. Um, so, uh, that's a little bit about me. I'm from the Pacific Northwest, originally from Southwest Washington, Longview Castle area, and I'm really excited to be here. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Jordan. Uh, Commissioner Brown, uh, tell, uh, since we're going around doing introductions, uh, might as well give the new members an opportunity to know a little bit about e- each other. So Tom, why don't you take it away?
Well, uh, Tom Brown, I'm a, uh, retired businessman. I've lived in Gig Harbor for those six or seven years now in, in the harbor and, uh, in the area for, uh, fifteen years. And I'm, uh, just in my fourth year of my term on the, uh, planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Bradbury?
Well, I'm Larry Bradbury. I, I've been on the commission for a year now. Uh, I've been living in Gig Harbor for about fifteen years. Uh, I am also retired, uh, retired out of the air force and, uh, a stint in the civilian world, uh, with the US Army, so most of it with the military. Uh, some private sector experience, uh, in heavy construction and related activities and and, and like the rest of you, I wanted to be able to make a contribution to my community using the skill sets that I've gained through all these years. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Soltes?
Uh, welcome, Jason and Ms. Snodgrass. Um, I'm, uh, uh, been in the area about seven years. I'm, uh, I guess you'd call me a NASA guy. I spent my whole career working for NASA in various positions. And, uh, I am particularly interested in the areas of the environment and climate change and stormwater management and things like that. Um, and I find this whole process of, uh, developing comprehensive plans and modifying them and the political machinations that go on is, is kind of fascinating to me. So it's been a, a learning experience. I'm in about my third year now, one more to go. But I'm looking forward to the big update of the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-four, so I think we're most of us will have enough experience now so that we can tackle that one. That's going to be a big job, but, uh, welcome aboard. We're, we're happy to have you here.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, I'm John Krosak. I had, uh, in my previous life, I had twenty-five years' experience as the county administrative officer for Yarmouth County, Oregon. So I've been interested and exposed to planning for a very long time. Uh, I've been a resident of Gig Harbor for twelve years. And, uh, I am also interested in environmental issues and transportation issues. And those, uh, those are the main things that, uh, I want to, uh, be on the planning commission for. But, uh, we also have plenty of other interesting things going on. Uh, so there'll be lots to do and we've got a full agenda tonight. And I have one more thing that I forgot before we get into the meat of the business. And that is, uh, this is, uh, uh, a statement that, uh, I was requested to read. And it says, "Before we begin this meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the band of the Woualip tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the longest-standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor uh, area. And that is, uh, recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month." So, uh, with that, then we will move on to the first item, uh, of the business of our agenda, and that is the bylaw review. So now, Josh, take it, take it, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Krosak, and thanks for having me on again. Um, yeah, so Michelle and Carl reached out to me and let me know that, uh, we, like commissioners, that asked about the bylaws that the planning commission has and, uh, how they need to be updated and, and kind of brought up to speed. Um, I think I was with you at one of your meetings in May, just after council updated its own guidelines and procedures. One of the things that council changed in its guidelines and procedures was that included guidelines that also apply to advisory boards, which include the planning commission. Uh, so we reviewed some of what those requirements are as far as holding your meetings and, um, and using Robert's rules of order and that kind of thing. A lot of what is in council guidelines is kind of duplicative and redundant to what you have in your bylaws. Um, so Michelle and Carl asked me to come in and kind of help them go, go through the bylaws and see what's, what's still relevant in the bylaws and what isn't. Um, and I think, Michelle, are you able to pull up what, uh, with my copy of the bylaws or anything like that? I would do that too, but, um, what we found as we were going through there is that pretty much all of what is in your bylaws is already covered in council guidelines. Um, so we can kind of look through some of that and, and answer questions if you have questions about what's in there. Um, but I think our recommendation after going through this is that, um, the planning commission probably doesn't need its own set of bylaws. And so at this point, it may be just in the best interest to keep things clean and clear and, um, consistent across the board, just to, to not have specific bylaws for the planning commission. I can go through and, and kind of talk about each of the points that you have in there if it's helpful for you. And I'll, let me see, I can, I can share my, Michelle.
Yeah, mine isn't wanting to open anything since I'm recording.
Yeah, okay. Can you all see that all right? Um, just quickly going through each of these articles, I can kind of highlight some of the, the things that are already covered elsewhere. Um, obviously, the establishment of the planning commission has done them and misproposed those, so the whole section one is not necessary. Um, the efficiency enforcement setting, so Article Two is not really necessary at all. Um, the new election, oh, Jason, let's see, you guys have a good.
Yeah, um, so I, uh, on that one, I was going to bring up the point that, um, it seems to me that these re- are required to be in-person meetings and is whether we change this one or whatever is in the cities. Um, you know, master one, is it going to allow for hybrid meetings going forward?
Yeah, the cities, the council guidelines and procedures, um, allow for hybrid meetings and in fact, it requires them. Um, and that's probably a, a good point to segue into the topic of in-person meetings. Um, we are hoping to be able to do those starting in November, since that's going to be our plan. Um, I was just actually on there testing audio/video equipment in the chambers for a couple of hours for our council meeting. Um, but council, the, the One Direction that council's given us on in-person and, and hybrid meetings is that they want to always have that, um, that Zoom component, that hybrid component. So that's kind of been the delay in getting us back into in-person, uh, aside from just the, the COVID concerns that are kind of looming into this year. The council wants to be sure that even though we're back in person, everything needs to be fully accessible to the public, but don't want to make it an easy person. They want, they want to always have that often for people to be at home to uh, fully experience the meeting. So I think we pretty much cover all of our hurdles and we need to get through to, to that point. Um, and I think starting in November, we can probably have most of our committees back in person. So that's where we're at with that part. And council guidelines pretty much, it, it makes it clear kind of how that process works.
Josh, um, and I just, I wanted to recognize too, if I could, that, uh, I know you had presented the, the council guidelines, um, to the planning commission once before. Uh, but just so, so we recognize that, uh, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Snodgrass were not on this body at that time, so they're probably unaware that, um, that the, that the council passed this and these new rules, these new guidelines that sort of supersede any of the um, official bylaws that any of the advisory bodies have, uh, uh, available to them. And so that's kind of the reason for, uh, why the city is now recommending that bylaws are, are no longer necessary for the, for advisory bodies. Just, just wanted to make that clarification for Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Snodgrass's sake.
Carl, are, are those available, are easily available to see?
Yeah, if you go to the city's website, there's, uh, our, our government section, there's a page for the city council and those guidelines they posted on that page.
They are also included in the binder that I sent you guys the night for.
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's great too. Um, just, uh, I'll go ahead and continue just quickly through the, the bylaws that we have. Article three is about the election of officers. That's pretty well covered in the council guidelines as well. That provides for the chair and the vice chair, um, and spelled out the duties of those officers. But one thing the council guidelines does not currently have, which, um, we are going to amend council guidelines to probably in the next couple of months to, to include, um, elections for the, the chair and the vice chair for all the boards. We're going to propose that that happens in January for, for all committees. Um, the reason for that is that each committee has a standard time when they appoint, uh, when, when term ex- term expirations happen. So for the planning commission, that's in June. Some of our committees is in March, some of them are in September. Um, for all the committees, January of each year is typically when, um, we're not making new appointments. So we have a pretty good feel of, you know, how the committees function and how the new members are fitting in. Um, and it's just kind of a natural time for, for doing the election, rather than doing elections, you know, right when two new members are first started and are not familiar with the, the players. Um, so that's something I think council's going to have in their next round of rules that will kind of, uh, help get it out there.
Well, uh, I think that's an important point because we have not observed the annual election provision in recent years. And, uh, we, we kind of slid past our second meeting in June election date this year. And that caused a certain amount of confusion and uncertainty. So tell me again how the, uh, the city rules are going to be amended to address elections, if you would.
Uh, the language will probably be read something like, at the first regular meeting of each, uh, each year, the commission, the commission will elect the chair and the vice chair. So for the planning permission, that will be your first third day meeting in January, but you do that each year.
Okay. Thank you.
So each calendar year?
Yes, each calendar year.
Okay.
Commissioner Snodgrass, you had your hand up?
Asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there?
Okay, so I'll, I'll continue on, um, the record of the meeting. Uh, this referencing the audio recording of the meeting, that's not what we're, we don't do audio recordings anymore. It's going to be zoom broadcast for all of our meetings. Uh, so that's already provided for in council guidelines for that section. Um, article four, section one, this is something we need to talk about with the committee. Um, the way your bylaws read right now, it's, it shows you provide for a work site, a work session that starts at five o'clock or, or end or a public hearing that starts at six o'clock. This is not something that really we can do under the Open Public Meetings Act. If you're going to have a regular meeting time, it needs to be the same regular meeting time for all of your meetings consistently. Um, so I talked to Carl and Michelle about this and I wasn't aware really until last week that you had this provision in here. Um, but our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt this, a standard meeting time of five-thirty for all of your meetings, whether it's a study session, a work session, uh, public hearing. Um, just for openness and transparency, it's important for the community to know, you know, exactly what number they need for all of their meetings. I think that the reason why we did this is because six o'clock is where the time that they chose because it's a little bit easier for people to get to, uh, public hearing after work. Um, five-thirty is adequate because that's the time city down for both all of their public hearings. So I, I think we can just compromise there and have all of them start at five-thirty. Um, if that's preferable with the commission. If that's preferable with the commission.
And Josh, will, will, I think we discussed, will, that the planning commission will need to, um, make a motion, uh, at the end of your presentation to adopt that, uh, that time going forward?
Yeah, that's something that the commission can change by motion. Just continuing through this article, Article four on meetings, um, section three for special meetings. Uh, this references that the chair can call special meetings, and that's not really a, a function of the chair. That's, uh, something that the commission can call for themselves or staff can, can ask the commission to hold a special meeting. Um, but council guidelines, very clear that special meetings can only be held, um, at the allowance of the mayor. So uh, one of the things that council wanted to do was make sure that maybe they aren't creating their own special meetings, which in turn creates, uh, a workload for staff. They want to make sure that everyone is following through the mayor to make sure that staff time is being used appropriately. So that's, so this one will be covered separately in council guidelines. The notice of meetings, this is all covered by the Open Public Meetings Act, and it's covered also in council guidelines. There's really nothing that the planning commission can do or reveal on the notice of meetings. Um, so this section is all really kind of, uh, redundant to stay long. Attendance at meetings and excused absences. The removal or, or the, uh, tracking of absences that that can only be done by the mayor. The mayor is the appointing authority for the city, so that is provided for in council guidelines as well. Um, so the planning commission plans that its own rules for attendance. Uh, quorum also identified in council guidelines, uh, quorum is the is a majority of the number of people that are appointed to the planning commission. So in your case, uh, there are currently six planning commissioners, so if there was four, if they were on the fire, we would inform them.
Hey Josh, just a second. The previous paragraph, does that mean that we have to inform the mayor if we're not gonna meet, be able to attend the planning commission meeting?
No, no, just, just let Michelle know. Um, and then when you have your meetings, um, if Michelle knows or the chair knows, then we can mark you as excuse if you're not there and that's fine. I think council guidelines, so that if you have three consecutive unexcused absences, then the mayor may choose to remove commissioner from the commission. Um, but that's, that's a discretion of the mayor. So it's not something the planning commission can say, you have to you, you can't regulate yourselves on attendance. It has to be done by the mayor. But, but the chair has the, or the commission has the ability to recognize when people are excused or absent.
Thanks.
Uh, motions and voting and parliamentary procedure, those are, are covered, of course, in the council guidelines. All of our boards are covered by Robert's rules of order, so that's, um, pretty straightforward. Um, and of course, the Public Records Act covers all of your records in public. So, um, that's not something you need to have in bylaws. Um, section ten of the section one that was brought up as something that, um, is not really covered anywhere else. It says the deadline for adjournment of the meetings is at eight o'clock. Unless by the flow of the majority, you want to extend the meeting. This is not something that any of our other commissions have. Like, it can be done. Our council has discussed doing it in the past for their meetings. But ultimately, what they typically do is they just, they, you know, we're still going at eight o'clock and somebody feels like we've gone too long, we just have a motion and stop the meeting. Um, there's no need to have a provision that says that you will do it. Uh, Article five deals with committees. I guess at some point there was an idea that the planning commission would pass standing committees. Um, that's all been changed by the council guidelines. We don't really, uh, condone or support committees or subcommittees of advisory boards. If there's a specific instance where a subcommittee would be helpful or, uh, necessary, the planning commission can request to have one, but it's something that has to be, uh, like a special meeting has to be approved by the mayor and to make sure the way the staff to support it, and that's really supporting the, the needs of the city. So this whole section here really isn't, uh, valid, um, for establishing how, how it would work.
Well, uh, Josh, could you say a few words about why you have, or the council has a negative, uh, attitude about committees?
Uh, subcommittees of a, of a, of a city body are subject to the same requirements of a city body. So if you are a subcommittee of the planning commission, you are still an open public meeting body. So you would have to have basically a meeting like this scheduled to discuss whatever business was before you, which means you'll have Carl and Michelle and, you know, whoever other staff are there, and that is not something that, um, council wants the, the planning commission to be able to indicate and direct. It needs to be something that the mayor said, yes, there's a definite need for a subcommittee to study this. Uh, and you can have a subcommittee meeting for the mayor to say, no, this is not something that we need to spend staff time on to deal with. It's just saying that it needs to be at the discretion of the mayor because the mayor is the person who's ultimately responsible for, um, how our staff can spend. It was not saying you can never have a subcommittee. It's just saying that if you do have one, it needs to be something like the mayor approves of first. And that pretty much takes us through the end. There's a provision here for amending the bylaws. So really, the only thing in the bylaws, I think that, that you would need to keep around is, um, you know, we need, we need to make, establish a regular meeting time, that five thirty meeting time. And then, um, like we want to have like a, a policy of adjourning all of your meetings by eight o'clock, it must have made a motion to continue them. That's something that's certainly, but not something that we have with our other bodies. But I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions or, you know, concerns about this. To be honest, uh, I didn't really even realize that planning commission had bylaws. It's been, I guess, seven years since they were adopted and planning commission is not one of the city's bodies that the municipal code allows to have bylaws, but it doesn't specifically or page you from having them, so wasn't really aware that they were there. I guess to sum up, the recommendation after talking with Carl and Michelle is that, um, the easiest, easiest thing would be just to have the planning commission make a motion to repeal the bylaws and then make a motion to establish that five thirty PM meeting time. That would probably be the easiest, easiest thing to do. But it's really kind of up to me to all at once and then.
And, and I, and I would recommend Commissioner, Commissioner Krasnick, if that's, if that is the, the will of the planning commission, or, or a commissioner to make that motion, I would recommend that we make, we make two motions and separate those, the two issues, um, the dissolution of the, or, uh, the, uh, the dissolution, is that the right word? I think so, of the, um, of the, of the bylaws. Uh, and then the, uh, the five thirty start time. So two separate motions is what I would recommend.
Okay, uh, that makes sense. Um, I just want to make sure that there are no other questions of Josh before we move uh, forward and, uh, I entertain a motion for those two items. Are there any other questions of Josh, Commissioner Saltis?
Yeah, Josh, um, it seems kind of asked backwards. You're asking us to repeal the bylaws when it's really the council that wants to repeal the bylaw. Why are we repailing our own guidelines and not the council taking that under action?
Well, the, the council can't take action on something that your body has done. So the, the bylaws are adopted by you and approved by you. And you can, you can repeal these, like, as we've recommended, or you can keep them and amend them, or you can keep them the way they are. Just, uh, anything that, that's in here, and there's quite a bit in here that, that conflicts with the, the way the guidelines are written, will just be superseded by guidelines. So it will create confusion and, um, for, just for clarity's sake, I think we, we encourage you just to, to go by the council guidelines.
Okay.
Other questions of Josh?
Okay, all of that said, I, I move that, uh, we dissolve the bylaws.
Commissioner Bradbury has moved to dissolve the bylaws. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
I would like to state that I am going to abstain from this vote, but I, I really don't approve of uh, eliminating the bylaws. And I'm not going to vote in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Oops, thank you. Um, Commissioner Brown, would, could you, uh, would it be appropriate for you to tell us more about why? I'm concerned as the new guy that I might be missing something.
Well, one issue is procedural, I I would like to hear the, uh, explanation for why the, uh, uh, the, uh, guidelines trump the bylaws. It, it isn't obvious to me that that's the case. Uh, secondly, uh, I think it would have been appropriate, uh, if we were to be, uh, faced with this issue tonight, to see something like a staff memo in advance of the meeting so we could understand what the plan was. I mean, I spent some time researching bylaws of other planning commissions of other cities in this state. I had some ideas about things that we ought to consider and discuss. And I, I, I guess it feels like a power grab to me, and I don't like it. So that's my point.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Brown, why, why would you lack to abstain if you disagree with the motion? Why would you not want to vote your conscience? I believe I have. Well, what, what are you suggesting, that I vote, uh, against it instead of abstaining?
Well, if, if you don't agree, yes, I, I would say you would vote nay.
I, I accept your advice.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the issue? Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah, sorry, just, uh, uh, maybe a question for, for Joshua or Carl. You know, a, as we advance our work, assuming this passes, and, and really the only specific bylaw left for the planning commission, as I understand it, is, um, is the time we start. If, as we move forward and redo our work, if there's an obvious another addition we want to make, is, is, is that something that we can work with the chair to bring forward, or are you really saying that, you know, the city council said, hey, these are our adopted policies citywide, and the only thing we're willing to allow you to make a decision on outside of that is your time? When you start?
Yeah, so I can, I can step in there. Um, procedurally, so most of the decisions they'll be making, I think like they're suggesting, will be procedural decisions about how the planning commission conducts its meetings and, and what we do. Um, and the council guidelines provide that you're, uh, governed by Robert's rules of order, and Robert's rules has several provisions within it on procedural decisions that you can make as a body. So, um, if you, well, if I'll just point out the example of having an eight o'clock adjournment time where you have to make a motion if you want to continue. That's a procedural provision that's in Robert's rules of order. So you don't need bylaws for that. It's already in Robert's rules. They say that you can, you can have that rule as a commission if you want to, and you can make that just by a simple motion at any time in one of the meetings if you want to do that. But that's getting into parliamentary procedure where you need to, you know, we can, we can address those issues come up, but multitude of directions you can go with that.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could, I would add that, um, I know that there, there are, the, the council is considering some amendments to those guidelines. And some of those amendments would be specific to, um, advisory bodies, as I understand it. Um, and so there will be some, um, there will be some, right now, the guidelines are silent on some items, I think. Uh, that council has recognized and Josh, uh, administration has recognized, and so they're gonna fill some of those holes so that the guidelines speak a little bit more to the advisory bodies. Right now, they're, they're very council centric, I think. Um, and so
Volume control, volume forty-five percent, volume twenty-eight percent.
But they will be making some, um, some changes to those so that there, there is, um, uh, a little more focus on the advisory bodies. I, did I, did I characterize that correctly, Josh? I think that
Yeah, I think so. There's been a number of changes just on the landscape of advisory bodies since last April when we did this, um, just, just even like the, uh, the public comment that we now have to take at the beginning of our meetings and so anything that, that we want provision for, so. Yeah, the, the state law landscape for advisory committees is changing constantly. That's something that council's gonna be revisiting in November. I think that's when they're planning to look at this again next. So I will keep Carl and Michelle on the radar for when council brings that up again, so you can you can see what their discussions are on those changes and, um, see if they draft, find which of their proposals, so you got a chance to, to weigh in on them.
Is it possible that this body can weigh in on them, or at least see a draft before and make any recommendations, or is that out of our?
I don't, I, I think it'd be possible for you as individuals to do that. If the planning commission is a body, that's, that's not really looking into your scope as a body. But, um, council will, they'll be opening in feedback from those commissioners individually, if there are things in there that, you know, concerns about or things that you want to see changed, um, they, they definitely will be open to that.
Is, okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor of the motion to, uh, abolish the bylaws, say aye.
Uh, Commissioner Krasnick, I believe we have to have a second.
Oh, we did.
Okay.
We did.
All right. Proceed.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the motion to abolish the bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is that a unanimous vote, or Commissioner Bradbury, are you abstaining?
Brown is muted. I think he was trying to abstain.
Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry. Commissioner Brown, you're, you're muted. Can, can you turn on his, uh, microphone?
I cannot turn it on. I can ask him to unmute, which I have.
Okay. Because I don't know what his vote is at this point. He seems to be speaking. Uh, vote, uh, against the motion, or did you abstain?
I voted against the motion. Sorry, I had a, a computer problem here for a moment.
Okay, I certainly understand that tonight. Uh, okay, so the motion passes with, uh, Commissioner Brown, uh, voting in the negative. Okay, now, uh, we have a second item that we, uh, need to take up with respect to the bylaws. And that is to change our starting time from five o'clock to five thirty, and then all public hearings will begin at five thirty. So is there any discussion on this issue?
Uh, point of order, Commissioner Krasnick, you will need a, a motion first, uh, before, uh, motion and a second before discussion.
Okay, sorry about that, Carl. Do we then have a motion to change our starting time uh, to five thirty for both regular meetings and public hearings? So moved? Okay? Is there a sec? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right, now we can have discussion.
Uh, I would offer a comment that I happen to be on a, a couple of other advisory bodies. Uh, and these also meet at, at five o'clock. Uh, so my mind goes to a bit of standardization for public meetings. Uh, and, and retaining a five o'clock start time would be beneficial for the public for that reason. Personally, it would work, uh, slightly better for me to start a half hour later. Uh, but we aren't here to suit me as an individual, but the public.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments?
I like the idea of a standard time, and I'm okay with five thirty, uh,
Then I can make my calendar be more productive. Every time I have to go back and check the time for the meeting, like today, I thought it was five thirty until I went and checked Michelle's memo. So a standard idea, a standard time is a great, great idea for all of us, I think.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sotis. Any other comments? If not, oh, Mr. Snodgrass, did you?
I was just going to say that for me, five thirty will be a little bit easier so that I could transition a little bit better between work and this.
Okay, thank you.
We're looking for data points. City Council meets at five thirty, the Parks Commission meets at five thirty, the Design Review Board meets at five o'clock. So five thirty seems to be kind of the trend.
All right.
And DRB will be discussing their bylaws at the next meeting, so that could change to five thirty as well.
It is currently five o'clock, yes.
Okay, all those in favor of changing our starting time for both regular meetings and public hearings, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, Josh. Appreciate your presentation and your the information you provided on this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going into comprehensive plan amendments. The first item here is the parks, recreation and open space or the pros amendments. So Carly, you want to take this one?
Thank you, Commissioner Krosick, and I will turn this over to, and and maybe if I could, I I would just really quickly for mostly for the benefit of the new members, introduce to you Robin Bolster Grant, who's a senior planner here with the city, relatively new to the city and new to the state, actually, a California transplant. But Robin's been great on bringing a lot of new ideas to us from her experience in planning and experience in another state, and we we really, really do appreciate her. And then also, and you will hear from Roxy later on in the in the meeting. Roxanne Robles joins us from Kitsap County most recently, but she's worked in a few jurisdictions around the state in Western Washington, also a California transplant earlier on in her in her life, I believe. So so they're they're coming, they're coming. So anyway, but Roxy's been great so far, and she's been relatively new with the city as well. And is really just doing a dynamite job. And then for your benefit, Michelle Thomas on the screen has been with the city for a while now and is really, you know, is the glue, one of one of the, one of the really glue pieces for our division. And we so appreciate her, her her role or is a a planning technician. And she is really your main point of contact with our with our division. And then, of course, I'm Carl DeCemus, and you've met me before, so I won't belabor who I am. But with that, I will turn this over to Robin to present this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, Robin Bolster Grant, senior planner, as Carl introduced. So this item is a preliminary discussion of the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan that were included in the 2022 docket approved by the city council in February of this year. Again, I will be splitting time with Roxy. We came before your commission on August eighteenth to present two of the four items that were included in the docket with an introduction to a third. Tonight, we will be presenting three items for discussion and include some clarification, some amplification of some of the things that were discussed in August. And of course, we're mindful that we have two new commissioners. So some of this will be a recap, at least for my piece, again, what was discussed in August. I'm afraid I have a rather unglamorous PowerPoint. It always seems to be the last thing on my to do list. So I will, I will up my game at some point, but tonight this is kind of bare bones. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And where are you?
Yeah.
There you are. Okay.
Zoom weapon or?
See, is that, let me make that a little bigger. There we go. Everybody see that pretty well, such as it is? I'm going to take that as a yes. So again, I'm focusing my efforts tonight on the parks, recreation and open space element changes. Also included are some changes to the capital facilities element that pertain to parks. Last time we met, I I presented a little bit of a of an overview. Again, this is going to be a little elemental for some folks, but just to differentiate between updates and amendments to our comprehensive plan. The Growth Management Act provides two ways to revise a comprehensive plan. We have the periodic periodic update that was mentioned earlier. That is mandatory. It happens now every ten years. Previously, we were on an eight year cycle, and it affects virtually every element for Gig Harbor. That that means thirteen elements that we will need to go through and update for various reasons, could be changes in in legislation, could be things that we wanted to change. That involves extensive public engagement, outreach, workshops, a website. And we are underway currently with that work for 2024. The annual amendment is the other way to make changes to the comp plan. It is optional. We get one crack at that per year, but a single docket can include more than one proposed change. And so for 2022, we originally had four elements within that docket. Annual amendments can be initiated by private citizens or by public entities. Again, this year, all four of the items on the docket were city sponsored. We did not have any private sponsored amendments. These are targeted, they're minor generally in nature, and go to city council for approval. The docket was approved again, I think I mentioned, in February. Both updates and amendments are approved by city council following recommendations from your planning commission. So 2022, again, we had these four items. Parks, recreation, open space, a portion of capital facilities. We also had an item revising capital facilities, different elements of it, and the utilities amendment. The comprehensive plan, we're proposing to amend to include language involving climate change and sustainability. And then we are adding Stormwater Management Action Plan. The docket item number two is not included. There were changes and and discussion, and it's not quite ready for prime time. So we will be taking three of the four, and we'll be discussing them tonight. So this piece, the the pros plan, it's a little confusing, but there is a pros element, Parks, Recreation, Open Space, that is in chapter eleven of the comprehensive plan. And then there's a separate Parks Recreation, we call it, we just simplify it to pros plan. But that's a separate standalone document. And in February of this year, the city council approved this 2022 pros plan after lots and lots of public outreach and mailers and lots of community input. And the pros plan that was adopted made changes to parks inventory, the actual acreage, and in some cases, naming convention, classification and goals and policies. So that the changes with the new pros plan created immediate inconsistencies with our comp plan. So that's what we are proposing to to resolve.
Robin, if I could jump in just really quick.
Sure, please.
Commissioner Jordan has a question he's got his.
Oh, see, I get you're very tiny in my screen. Yes, please interrupt me.
All right, yeah, I wasn't sure what the protocol was if we're allowed to interrupt or if you prefer questions at the end.
I always allow interruptions, absolutely.
You mentioned four amendments, one wasn't ready for prime time. So does that mean, can you say a little bit more about what was in that? And does that mean it won't be coming this year? It'll have to wait till the following year?
It, yeah, and it may roll into the 2024 update. It it's, without going into, it's a little arcane, but it is the types of changes that can be made, sort of. I don't want to say on the fly. It's not, it's not quite that that straightforward, but changes to infrastructure having to do with stormwater or or drainage facilities, infrastructure pieces have in the past been revised in ways that may or may not align with how we're supposed to do things. Now, we haven't figured that out, but it's a more complicated question. It's it's not that that those changes have been done in a way that is improper. It's just, it's just not clear that that we've been doing it in a way that we want to make those changes. So, I mean, there there are examples I can I can trot out, but it involves some some potentially legal questions. We just always want to make sure that we're that we're doing everything in accordance with the the GMA, the Growth Management Act, and any other governing rules. It just hasn't been resolved whether that's been the case, and so we need to investigate that. If those changes are required to be made, we could include that in a docket for next year. Or we could wait until, again, the the 2024 update, which covers everything. And so, yeah, more discussion. It's not, it's not uncommon. I mean, we we have an idea at the beginning of the year, what we want to change. And as we get closer and have more discussions, whether it's internally with with Public Works in this case, you know, city attorney, if it if it rises to that. And and there are just some things we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to jump before we have everything lined up. So we're not quite ready for that.
Appreciate. And then my last question around that is, is it typical in Gig Harbor? Is every year different? I'm kind of surprised there's no private citizen requests.
Carl can speak to that better than I.
Yeah, that's Commissioner Jordan, that's a good question. And it is, it is fairly typical that we don't have any private requests. Oftentimes, we'll we'll sometimes get a comp plan amendment for, you know, like a land use amendment is what we would typically see, and it would typically be relative to a, it would be project specific oftentimes, right? And and so what they, you know, they want to make, they want to rezone. They can't rezone within the land use classification that they're currently in. So they have to get a comp plan amendment to do that. We and and we didn't have any this year, and and I think last year we didn't have any. We might have had one in. Well, it's hard to remember now. It's been a little while. We just don't, we don't get them very often. And so our docket, our annual doc, comp plan amendment docket is is usually pretty lean. And then there are also a while back, without getting too verbose on this, they, a while back, we changed the code such that private amendment requests could only be decided in even years. And so we limited them just a little bit because we were, I get, I and I and I wasn't, I was here, but I wasn't really a part of the long range planning process at that time. And what I understand is that we were getting a lot of amendments all the time, and it was taking up so much staff time that we kind of had to sort of try and parse them out and space them out just a bit. So now the code reads that private amendments need to come in by June the previous year to get on the docket for the following year, not following year being an even year. So the council can make a decision in that year. So, sorry, that's probably a lot more information than you wanted on this, but trying to trying to give you a full answer.
Thank you.
All right. So so again, the the inconsistencies that were created when city council adopted this pros plan had to do with park classification, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Updated inventory. Again, actual acreage out there that is within the the city limits. And then the restatement of goals and policies. It also introduced an alternate method of measuring level of service. It it's not clear how we're going to to deal with that, but I thought I'd mention it because it it does come up a lot in the pros plan. And let me just sort of, so kind of terminology. The level of service measures the adequacy of parks, and it's a term that that is used for roads and other infrastructure, right? Are they functioning the way they're supposed to? Historically, for parks, it has been kind of just a raw numbers, acreage per capita. And so in the in the pros plan, they they sort of rolled out a different way of thinking about level of service, which I think makes more sense, where it's about the the user, you know, how how do parks perform? How, what is your level of satisfaction? Not just, you know, how much acreage do we have? So so we're not necessarily changing that because the pros plan kind of suggested it. I think this is probably something that that will work into the 2024 update. I see your hand, Commissioner Snodgrass.
I was just curious on the level of service and the customer satisfaction. Is this just a survey that is given out? Is there a way to track utilization?
That's a good question. Um, it's more just a survey. I don't know that we have, you know, sort of like we do traffic counts, like where we're counting bodies or something. It really, so for the pros plan that that was adopted in in February, I think twenty five hundred or so mailers went out to folks. And and then there was an open house. So so that the public participation happens, you know, when when these plans are updated. And 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 we'll see what happens with the with the 2024 update. Again, we're going to be revisiting a lot of these things. It's not clear at this point if we're going to add to what was just done, because we have a lot of other elements to to deal with. And and the parks plan that was approved is is pretty comprehensive. I think hopefully I included a link to that. If you haven't read through that, there's, it it's interesting in terms of how public participation and outreach was conducted by by the the firm who who helped put us, put that together for us. So the the level of service, I just referenced that because it is, because I think it's interesting. And and I think it better reflects how we look at our our parks and whether they're meeting the needs of of our community. As of right now, we, and and this is probably more applicable to the capital facilities element, where they use level of service to figure out what needs to be upgraded and and where, you know, where money should be spent if if we don't have enough acreage. So it it's a, I've gone down a little bit of a rabbit hole with this, I admit, because, I guess, because I find it so interesting, but it really isn't necessarily a part of of the changes, other than just by reference, because it's in the pros plan. So far, we don't have a way to capture this new way of measuring in terms of our capital facilities. Does that make sense? They like hard numbers, engineers. I hope nobody is an engineer taking offense, but it's, you know, for all of us and planners too, you know, bright lines and and acres per per capita is a lot easier to to maybe structure a plan around or figure out where you need to spend your money rather than folks saying, you know, I really don't walk on trails that much, and I would like to see, you know, you name it. Anyway, I I roll it out because it is in the pros plan. Really, the the changes, the text changes have more to do with park classification, which is just a way of defining parks by their size, their use, the amenities they provide. So neighborhood parks versus community parks. And just just to clarify, and I probably shouldn't have said this in the beginning, but the so I don't have a say in, or really a great way of explaining why these changes happened with the pros plan. That's that ship left the dock, right? That was approved by the city council, and that is our pros plan. My job, our job, is to make sure that our comprehensive plan is not inconsistent. And so if the pros plan changes the way they classify and they call something that was a neighborhood park, now it's a community park, we we follow suit. So and I, you know, I I have opinions, but I'll I'll keep them. And I, you know, I I have opinions, but I'll I'll keep them to myself. I I think that they did a good job and and I would encourage you if. If you're if you're as interested in in parks and and open space and and trails to to read the. It's actually a pretty interesting read, the the 2022 plan. So the other thing that was changed, I've mentioned this before, is the inventory, again, just updating the number and the acreage of the parks, fields and and trails that we have citywide. So the proposed changes are to amend sections of chapter 11. To conform to the pros plan. The classification, the inventory, and then the goals and policies, which are part of all of these plans. Again, I can't tell you what the. With the basis for for changing would be. I'm sure it it made sense and was well founded, but it it is. It is. What it is. And so we need to amend our goals and policies in the comp plan to match the pros plan. And then there is a piece again in the capital facilities element that includes, again, just consistency. That's. That's a big part of of what we do in long range planning is to make sure that all these plans match and are consistent internally. And 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 more, but that's a that's a different rabbit hole. So points of discussion, again, I just want to make sure that that everybody is understanding that the amendments reflect a plan that has already been adopted. By the city council. None of the proposed changes reflect any policies that have not already been adopted by the city council. So next steps. We will, of course, be here to. Address any concerns that that we hear from the commissioners, from members of the public. We intend to come back. October 20 with the final strike through red line text amendments. And we will be seeking your recommendation before we go to the city council. Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah, thanks. So did I understand what you were just saying is that the plan's already been adopted? By the city council? So I guess I'm confused. What's what's our purpose then?
To. To recommend that we. Go ahead and 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 make these changes to the comprehensive plan. Again, I know it's. And I will step back and say that. It is our intention to take the pros plan. Which is a beautiful document and incorporate that and make it. Chapter 11 in the comprehensive plan, but there are some pieces in there having to do with capital facilities. And budgets and stuff that that are not. They're not ready for prime time either. We haven't finished our our budget hearings. And so we can't take it wholesale and and just make it. Part of our comprehensive plan. But it is right now a standalone document that was already approved. The comprehensive plan is what we need to change to match. Did I make that more or less confusing? Right? Sorry.
So am I right in the in my simple brain? What you're saying is there's plan. We still need to review it in terms of putting it into the comp plan, but the plans are there.
We are just looking at the comp plan.
Let me, if I could, Robin, let me jump in really quick and just and try and help because it is. It is. It is a confusing thing, and we're 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 kind of working through the way the city has. Operated throughout the years and and recently in 20. Let's see. So in 2018. We went through this as well. We had a transportation plan. And we had a transportation element. So we had our comp plan that had this element in it, but we also had this transportation plan. And so what we found ourselves doing was constantly amending one. And then updating the other one and then updating and then amending and updating, you know, kind of going back and forth, making sure that they were consistent. What we decided to do in 2018 was why are we doing this to ourselves? We're just going to make the transportation plan, the transportation element. So we're only, you know, updating it once. And so when you go to our comp plan and open up the transportation element. It says, see gig on the go, which is our transportation plan, and that is that is our now now our de facto. Transportation element. So we're only looking at it in one place all the time for consistency sake. Makes way more sense. We're planning to do the same thing with the pros plan, and we would have liked to have done that now. But we couldn't because of the capital improvement projects, the CIP that is that is that is embedded. In the pros plan and that it has ramifications on the city's budget. And so we wouldn't be able to just bring that in wholesale at the moment. So the best solution we had was to bring this amendment forward that would really just address the consistencies between the current element. And this pros plan. So it's a. In other words, it's a bit of a formality in some ways because the plan has already. Been approved. It's actually already been. It was reviewed by the planning commission. And then adopted by council, and now we're just bringing, as Robin said. Just bringing these. Cleaning up these inconsistencies in the in the comprehensive plan, so we don't have. Two differing. Documents.
Right.
Opposing documents.
Yeah, if I could also add, just going back to the issue of of how often. And and the restrictions on when you can amend or change the comp plan. That is that is seen as a limitation sometimes. And so in in certain instances, it may serve you to have a plan. That is separate from the comprehensive plan, as confusing as that is, because you may be able to change that. Without having to go through this formal process, limited once a year and all of that. So. I I have heard that as as a reason to have a separate plan. I don't think it makes sense for parks. We're not. Changing parks all the time, as far as I know, or at least not significantly. So. It would alleviate confusion for planners, for the public, for for lots of folks. To to just incorporate it into into the comprehensive plan and. And again, I think we will be looking at that and and hopefully doing that as a part of our update. So this is a formality and but I I'm still I still want, you know, I want your input. But yeah. There's there's not much to 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 do about, you know, changing it other than just to answer questions. So. So that's all I've got. Let me know if you have any other questions. I'm going to stop sharing. And. If not, I will turn it over to Roxy.
Commissioner Soltis, you had your hand up?
Oh.
Well. I was going to ask Robin a little bit more about this whole. Cycle here. It's you say you're going to amend the plan. But you're not, but eventually you're going to replace the plan with the it sounds like whenever the. Last lingering details of the pros get approved through the capital development. So I was a little confused because I thought I recently looked, listened to the presentation on August 18, like as in this afternoon. So I wanted to make sure that I was understanding. It's really not a replacement at this moment.
It's not a replacement. Sorry. Sorry to interrupt. That's correct. And we had gone back and forth a little bit, and I'm sorry for the confusion. But once, once we sort of. I figured out that that that. Capital improvement plan that the budget piece was a part of the pros plan. It became clear that that. We couldn't take it the way it is right now.
Got it. I wanted to know what role did the Parks Commission have in this process?
They were heavily involved in the pros plan, not. Yeah, I I mean, it it went through. I mean, I wasn't. I wasn't here, but they they certainly worked hand in hand with with our our previous parks director. In putting this together and and giving it their their thumbs up.
Okay, so they've they've had a substantial role in the development of the language and and everything that has been added to it.
That is my understanding. Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, one additional question, if I may, and it's not necessarily main line here, but. I was kind of curious how much the consultant was paid to do the pros plan.
I don't. I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't have that figure in front of me either. Commissioner Soltis, a good question. We could get that for you, though, and bring and bring that number back when we when we present this at the public hearing, if that is of interest to you.
It is. I'm because I'm thinking Roxanne has a $76,000. Allocation for the climate activity, and I'm wondering how that how that stands up to the pros plan. Just curious, actually.
Thank you. Certainly get that. We can certainly get that data for you.
Okay, any other questions? So Carl, this is going to come back to us at our next meeting. And then at that time, we're going to be taking action on it.
Yeah, that's commission. That's that's correct. Commissioner Crossley, we will. We were bringing this back on the 20. For public hearing. And at that time will be, there will be deliberations, then we'll be asking for. A recommendation to move it on to city council for approval.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on to the next item? Okay, if not, then we're ready for the stormwater management action plan. Who has?
That's me. Hi. So good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to be presenting on two items. The first is the stormwater management action plan. You heard about this. Well, if you were on the council or excuse me, commission at that time on. August 18 from Brian Ellis, who she was our stormwater tech. She departed the city for bigger, better things, mainly taking care of. Two of the cutest kids I've ever seen. Full time. And then I'm also going to talk to you about. Climate change amendment, and I will need I won't. I'll need more feedback on that one. The Stormwater Management Action Plan, while I do welcome your feedback and questions. It is a state requirement, and there's like very specific items that are required within it that I'll go through with you for awareness, but. Yeah, I'm not. Just to be completely honest, I'm not really sure what exactly y'all would have to say about it because it is very technical. Okay, so I'm going to do the stormwater this map first, and then we'll go into climate. All right, can everyone see my screen? Okay? Okay, great. So yeah, we're going to be talking about the Stormwater Management Action Plan. So the city, like many other municipalities, is a permittee of this mouthful. It's the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. So it's a state requirement to discharge to waters of the state would so, you know, any kind of stormwater surface water that the is generated within the city that goes into a water of the state, like a lake. River. Gig Harbor Bay Puget Sound, you have to be permitted to. Discharge that, and the state wants to make sure that we have stormwater infrastructure to capture and treat everything before it goes. Into the bay. So a new requirement that was developed for 2019 requires the Stormwater Management Action Plan. It is both a process and a product, so I included the draft SMAP. In the. In the commission packet for your review. The. Stormwater Management Action Planning is the process that we're going to talk about. So this plan is going to be added as an appendix to the existing 2018 Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. That comprehensive plan is kind of nested within the. Our, you know, citywide comprehensive plan within the capitals facilities element. Any questions on that nesting and kind of the the matrix there? Okay, great. It took me a minute to process all of that, so you guys are super sharp. All right, so this map has three main requirements. One is a receiving water assessment where you analyze the. Waters that are receiving stormwater runoff from the city. The second is a basin prioritization. So that's a process where. The city. Looks through all the information and data it has to understand which stormwater basin is of highest priority for action planning. And then it has an action planning element. So the main focus of SMAP. Process and plan are how can existing stormwater problems be addressed strategically? And how can the city accomplish water quality goals while meeting future population and density targets? So the receiving water assessment, you can see that. This out, the darker outline is the city boundary and that kind of gray outline is our UGA. You can see that we discharge into both. Oh, my gosh, my glasses aren't. Henderson Bay to the north, and then, of course, Gig Harbor Bay and the Puget Sound to the south. So those are receiving waters. So it was a GIS assessment that used. Different models to understand which basins, which bodies within the city's. Boundaries are discharging into all of these different receiving waters. And also to understand the quality of water that's existing in Henderson Bay, Good Harbor Bay and Puget Sound. So these are all the different data sets that were used to understand land use, the quality of. Environment and habitat in the receiving waters, and then the stormwater infrastructure that discharges to each of these receiving waters. The second.
Sorry, question. Did you there? Did the city do all this analysis, or did you have to hire an outside consultant?
No, the the city did. I didn't do this personally, but Brian Ellis and Mike Simmons, who are in Public Works, they they put all this together. So. I'm really just. Trying to do my best to interpret all the work that they did.
Got it. And to that point, if I I would, I would add, Commissioner Jordan, sorry, that. The city of Gig Harbor is one of the few jurisdictions, actually, that when this when this map came up. We said, oh, that's great. We have to do this thing now. Well, Gig Harbor actually already had something like this. We were one of the few. Jurisdictions that actually has a stormwater comprehensive plan. A lot of jurisdictions don't have that, and there was no requirement for it. And so Ecology came up with this map idea because most jurisdictions don't have something like this. And so. We had a lot of this data already embedded in that comp plan. So this was a this was a. This was a much easier lift for us than it might have been for some other jurisdictions to do.
Yeah. Thanks, Carl.
Can I ask a question here? What is a sandborne map?
Oh, a sandborne map. Those are historical maps that were used for fire insurance purposes. I think they're actually pretty cool. They date back to like the 1850s in some cases, and. There's a really good catalog at the Seattle Public Library that you can access digitally. And it helps you understand historic land uses because sometimes there'll be. They're they're very kind of primitive, but you know, it'll be like boxes along streets and. Sometimes there's an address, but it'll tell you like generally what some of the buildings were used for. So that's a good way to. Understand if there was, you know, like. Maybe a a gas station or something that had maybe historically. Toxic chemicals or potential for contamination in a certain area.
Okay, thank you.
I I have a question. The author of authors of the SMAP plan was in our packet. Was that? Were the authors, the consultants, were they? Were they city staff? Who?
A city staff, yes.
Thank you.
And I did a little bit at the end, just tying up loose ends once we lost our stormwater tech. All right. So the next part of the SMAP process is to delineate all of the stormwater basins. So this is another GIS exercise completed in house. And so you can see all these different colors represent different stormwater basins. This could be different creeks, different. Any kind of water body that is generating water and based on topography, you can see that they all pretty much touch the shoreline. So each of these. Areas, you know, is discharging to a receiving water. All right. And so when we were looking at which of these, so. We we checked out, we looked at all these different basins based on topography and water bodies, and then. The next part of the exercise is to prioritize which of those basins is most important to. Prioritaries from a public work standpoint in. Developing, repairing, monitoring, public works, projects, capital facilities, projects and water quality. So. In this leftmost box, you see this is all of the stormwater basins that were in that previous map that are within the city of Gig Harbor and the urban growth area. These one, two, three, four, five, these five stormwater basins had. I think like 40% or more of their area within the city of Gig Harbor, meaning we would have the most. Jurisdiction over. Uh, jurisdiction over what happens in those stormwater basins, because you can see some of these stormwater basins, you know, they're, they're not completely in the city. Part of it is in the city, but not a lot of it. So.
I have a question about the prioritization and the calculations there. It seems to me there's an error. And the percentage. There, there's a column in one of the tables in the uh, SMAP. That is, it's the one uh, furthest right that says percentage within the city limits of Gig Harbor. But the actual calculation is, is not that, it's. Includes not only the city limits of Gig Harbor, but the UGAs. The, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we calculated both.
But what the, what the SMAP says is that that percentage is the percentage of the basin that's within the city limits of Gig Harbor, and I don't think that's correct.
I, I guess I'm. I'm not understanding the question.
Commissioner Brown, do you have a citation for the table?
Yeah.
Speaking to?
Uh, I can, yeah, just a minute.
I'm guessing maybe that's. Maybe table two?
I think it is.
Because we'll, you know, when it, when it's, when it comes down to percentages and things like that, if um, if there's a question, we'll have to bring that back to um. This, the uh, Public Works Director, who's sort of managing stormwater. Not sort of, he is managing stormwater at this point. And uh, and have them check those numbers to make sure that that's right. And if there's any corrections to be made, then we can make that correction. I just want to make sure that we know. What it is you see.
Look, let me give you the example, it's on the screen right now, okay? The first line says that Bitter Creek. Uh, the basin is seventy-four percent within the city limits. The fact is that the calculation. Seventy-four percent of the basin is within. The city and the UGA limits, not just the city limits.
Oh, I see.
Oh, so the, the math wasn't right, is that?
The, either the labels aren't right, or the math isn't right, but it isn't right.
Okay. I, I think it's a really, a good point, I'm not, I can do the math right here, Commissioner Brown, but.
Believe it's true of all of the uh, of the basins where the, where the UGA acreage is included.
Huh. Um. I'm not getting. I'm going to check the math on all of those because I didn't get seventy-four percent for either of those numbers on the Bitter Creek. I'm sorry, I didn't check those numbers, I was going off of kind of what I was given. Um, but I do know that North Creek, just based on, what we ended up prioritizing in this. Through this process is the North Creek Basin, which you can see is this yellow basin right here. And that one certainly, just from a visual analysis, has the majority of its uh, of the basin within. Gig Harbor limits, which is this red line here, so um. The whole purpose of this exercise was to prioritize the basin for which will. Give the most kind of like attention through capital facilities projects. Um, so I do know that even just from a visual survey, that that is a priority. And um, when we look at habitat and water quality priority, North Creek was listed on ecology's list of what they call three oh three D. Water bodies, meaning contaminated in some way, it was contaminated by um, copper from the Sportsman's um. Facility, um, and so that is still a high priority in terms of habitat and water quality. So I will go back and check those numbers, thank you for that, Commissioner Brown.
You, Roxanne?
Yes.
Uh, this is great analysis and good catch on the math, that's, that's great, um, so. Okay, I, you may have answered this, but by identifying North Creek as the priority. Um, does, is, is the purpose of the study to um. So my experience with like MS four and all that is more of kind of a regulatory responsibility, but. That's my court experience, uh, is this to identify where you want to spend your capital dollars?
Yes, like which is going to be a priority, and then reporting back to, because again, this is a state requirement. The city already has a stormwater management plan and stormwater comprehensive plan in place. So this is a basically a mechanism for the state to understand what it is the city has prioritized in high priority basins. So this exercise is telling the state, hey, this basin is a hot, is the highest priority. And these are the actions that we have planned within that basin over the next six years.
And maybe you're going to get to that point, um.
Yes.
Jumping ahead, but so not only does it identify where you want to spend the city's dollars. Um, does it also talk about additional regulations in this area to help?
Um, it's basically, we outlined a number of strategies that we, we want to take to make sure that um. This remains a high priority for habitat and water quality and infrastructure. So yes, I will, I will be getting to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Roxanne, I, I noticed in reading the report that uh, the uh, there was a very high concentration of lead. In North Creek, that was attributed to the firing range. Who's going to be responsible for the cleanup? Is that going to be the city, the, the operator of that facility, the state, or is it going to be a super fund?
It already is a priority for the state, um, I believe cleanup has either. I think they did a feasibility study to understand how much it's going to cost, I forget the date on that. But um, it, it is kind of uh. Ecology doesn't have a ton of power, but um, they have, that is a priority site, and they have started work on the cleanup.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so um. Other basin prioritization, so what we looked at was um. You know, like. Basically, all of these criteria, so these are all of it together, you know. Jurisdictional, these are all of the criteria that were given points to help prioritize the basin, so um. North Creek basically. Was a priority in all of these areas, it has a salmon-bearing stream, it had, it's on a three oh three D list. Um, it's highly developed, meaning there's a lot of hard surface area in the basin. Um, and it has an outfall to Gig Harbor Bay and the Puget Sound. So all of these make North Basin, uh, excuse me, North Creek a very high priority basin. So ta-da, we arrived at North Creek Basin as uh, the priority basin, which we um, concentrate on in the SMAP. So um. Within the stormwater action planning portion of the report and this exercise, we outlined several public outreach and education uh, actions that we will take. Um, talk about how we're going to uh, monitor illicit discharge and um, eliminate those sources. And also operation, operation and maintenance, uh, just basically routine things that we will do to make sure that North Creek Basin is prioritized and that North Creek is kept clean. So uh, short-term actions, these are within um, six years, so there's already several things uh, budgeted. Um, the North Creek daylighting, um, there's a recent, I believe the. Opening ceremony was on Tuesday, but the Conservation Futures Property along Harborview Drive. We're doing an urban forestry management plan, um, we've already started work on that, and trees are important for stormwater. And that will be, stormwater will definitely be a component of that planning process. Um, and then I don't have to read off everything to you, but um. You know, some of these things are, you know, source control, business inspection, priority base, and just kind of listing routine city things that are happening to make sure that our um. North Creek is a priority. And then longer-term actions, um, continued, um. Fish barrier removal, analyzing culvert crossings, um. Uh, more, you know, open space, public land, acquisition along the stream corridor, um, things of that nature. Um, any questions on the actions or any other general questions about this map? I know that was a lot of information.
Well, I have some questions on the actions.
Okay.
Uh, are either the culverts that uh, are planned to be replaced? In UGAs, or are they both in uh, within the city limits?
Well, if it's a city project, it would have to be in the city limits, we don't have jurisdiction over the UGA.
And, okay. It, it just seems to me that. The bulk of the money that is in this plan, nearly fourteen million dollars. Is allocated for the culvert replacement, and I don't have anything against daylighting the. The culverts or I don't have anything against the salmon, but. The, the point of this is, is stormwater management and reducing pollu- pollution. And, and that fourteen million doesn't really address. Either of those issues. And, and I, I guess, I, I, I. It may be the right way to spend the money, but I'm not persuaded by what I read in this stat. And I think when we're asked to approve this and send it on to the council. We ought to be thinking about what we're proposing, recommending that the council do. And I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with that. For those reasons.
Um. That's a great perspective, uh, Commissioner Brown. I would say that the culvert replacements are already part of the capital improvement plan and have already been approved. And so we're just trying to highlight in this plan for ecology that these are projects taking place within our priority basin. This doesn't. Have like um.
This is new spending is what you're saying.
It's not, right, it's not new spending, it's highlighting that these projects are taking place within the priority basin because North Creek is a salmon-bearing stream. And while this is a, a plan about stormwater, you know, s-. Stormwater goes into salmon-bearing streams, ecology is, this is a requirement from ecology, ecology is interested in salmon. So it's all kind of connected, I understand that it's not a direct stormwater project, but these are things like ecology would want to know about.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Saltus?
Yes, um. This is just a list of actions and uh, projects for North Creek. Are there other additional actions and projects like other capital improvements that are for the other um. Less, lower priority wa- uh, waterships in the uh, improvement plan?
Yes, of course, we're just not, uh, that would be in the. The stormwater capital improvement plan, those would all be listed, this is just for North Creek. Since this is what we're reporting in this stormwater management action plan, this is what we're reporting in this map. So the SMAP scope is pretty small, you know, we're just really talking about North Creek.
Great, I was hoping that the other ones weren't going to be eliminated in North Creek.
Oh, of course not, no, it's just, you know, ecology, ecology, this is a mechanism for ecology to understand how we're pri- what our priority basin is and what we're doing there, you know? Because they, you know, if we have a bunch of, if we were to prioritize a bunch of money to a basin where we didn't have a ton of jurisdiction, or maybe, you know, it didn't meet all of these criteria that they are interested in, then they would probably have a lot to say about it. But I think we're doing fairly well in terms of prioritizing our uh, capital improvements. By these, you know, criteria.
Thank you, and, and one comment for the planning commissioners, I would, I listened to the uh, discussion from last month. And you had a lot of discussions on uh, the stormwa- what's in the stormwater manual, and what about the development up north and so on and so forth? And I, there's a really in- interesting section in here on four point three land preservation, it talks about the city's design manual. Uh, is one example of a tool to manage development of the receiving waters, and it talks about uh. Uh, tree removal and uh, ways to kind of mitigate that by, you know, additional tree plantings. So uh, there is something in the design manual regarding um, how many trees that you can take and how you have to replace them. And I thought that was quite interesting, and I'm glad that this uh. This document has addressed that, it's, it's pretty important, and I guess it's going to be even more important when we get our urban forestry management plan going. Because uh. All of us, I think, wonder where, how, how so many trees could be taken down. Yeah, by, and still follow the city rules, so.
Absolutely, yeah, that is definitely going to be a focus on the urban forestry management plan.
All right, that's the end of my editorial speech.
Thank you, Commissioner Saltus, uh, Commissioner Jordan?
There you go, um, great report, I'm looking at um, tables four and table five, right? And if I understood you, Roxanne, in the report, um. If I understood, table four is kind of uh, what for you to get there, I think it's like page twenty-one or twenty-two.
Um, okay, yeah, the short-term action impl- implementation schedule.
So on, on that one, if I understood correctly, that's kind of already in the plan, that's, that's in the CIP and that works.
Yes.
Um, and I assume the start dates are accurate on all that sort of stuff, which is. Um, if you go down to the next table. Um, to get to, I think it was Commissioners uh, Saw this, this point, this, this table five. Um. I guess my question for staff, and I'm wondering if ecology, well, if it's doable, but could we flush this out more and put a little more teeth in this? Because this is where actually some of the. I think the pollution reduction measures are going to occur. And I'm wondering if you could model it after the table above, recognizing that it's in future years. Put a little more um. Emphasis on when it's going to happen and how much, or if we know it might be or ranges.
Okay, I think that would have budgetary implications. Um, which I think is why the initial authors didn't add any years to it. But I can definitely ask the Public Works Director if he's comfortable with that.
Yeah, that'd be cool, and recognizing that they're targets, right?
Yeah.
Um, but it seems like that that would be um. Helpful.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Roxanne, there's a technology out there that allows for uh, a asphalt surface that's permeable. Is that something that's too expensive to put in as part of a plan to try to encourage? Developers to do this, or just the technology isn't far enough along, or? Or is that something that could be uh, added here?
Um, I think that our, our stormwater requirements, you know, our stormwater manual encourages permeable surfaces. I think it's difficult to be prescriptive about the types of materials that you ask someone to, to use in their development because, you know, everyone's dealing with different budgets and different sites, and um, it just might not be feasible. Um, I do, I am familiar with the product that you're um. Talking about, but I think it is difficult to be prescriptive about certain products. Um, in talking to developers, we usually kind of just go by like principles and design methods, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Roxanne, can I, can I just piggyback on that?
Yeah.
So much for the development community, but what about for city projects? Couldn't we, couldn't we put our money where our mouth is on city projects and recommend permeable? Uh, pavement, uh, asphalt?
Yeah, um, I'll see, all again, I'll ask if the, the Public Works Director is okay with uh, adding something like that. I would add that I think um. Oh, in this table, table five, we have reduction of unused permeable surfaces. In there, so just trying to reduce, to remove uh, impermeable surface on, you know, city. Properties where possible.
But shouldn't that, shouldn't that read reduction of unused impermeable surfaces?
Oh, good point, yeah.
Let me just, let me just say, as long as I'm speaking, that I really would recommend that uh. This, the document needs a good edit.
Yeah.
Well, and thank you for that, Commissioner Brown, and that, that's a good catch on that one, and well, I'll just go back to um. I think it's a very good idea that it does need a good edit, and we, the, the, the author of this document. Is no longer with the city, she, she, she resigned with the city uh, to take care of her family at home. Um, and so we're. Kind of the recipients of that, and Roxy, Roxy's been kind of given the document. Um, however, it's not our, the planning division's document to own, it really is public works document. And so we appreciate uh, any of these things that you have found, and, and I would add that if. If in reading this document, if anybody does care to take more time to read through it, please do send any of those edits along to us, and we'll get it all cleaned up. And we'll go through it uh, prior to bringing. And we'll go through it prior to bringing it back on the twentieth for the hearing. But we'll, we'll have all of those things definitely cleaned up. We appreciate your eyes on it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I am a planner, but I had to become a stormwater tech o- over the course of like a week. This is Commissioner Snodgrass. Did you have a question?
I do. I don't know if we want to go too far down this rabbit hole at the moment because I am not as as up to speed on these new products for civil engineering and that sort of those, those materials used in city works and development. The product that they were talking about, the permeable surface. I think it's important that we are both stewards of the resources because we're never getting those back. Like once we do the, but we're also stewards of taxpayer money. What is the, the cost implication of this other material?
I really have no idea.
I can speak to that a little bit. I can, I can tell you that it is, it is more costly actually. And, and I wonder if Commissioner have some, have some insight on this, but
What's the lifespan on it?
That's the problem with it that we've, that we've seen. And, and I've seen it employed at other civic centers and a- around the state and, and it needs a lot of maintenance. If it's not maintained properly, then it fails very quickly. And so the maintenance costs on permeable pavement is, is, are high. If you don't do it, then the fines, fines get into the permeable pavement and they claw and clog it up. And so you have to keep it sprayed out and clean all the time. Cause as soon as it gets clogged up and it gets, and then those fines get compacted inside that permeable pavement, it fails completely. And it gets to a point where you can't do anything about it. And then you end up with pooling across the top. It's not infiltrating the way it was supposed to. And you don't, you didn't, you didn't put a stormwater system in place to handle that water now. So now you have a real problem, right? Because you've relied on infiltration. Um, and that is another part of it. That permeable pavement doesn't work in every case because you do have to show that the water will infiltrate, that the soil will allow the water to infiltrate. And we, in, in this area in Northwest, in particular, Western Washington especially, a lot of our soils do not infiltrate well because we have we have sand over the top of sort of a hard, uh, hard clay surface. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Snodgrass. I know.
I just had a question based on, kind of on what you're talking about now. The, the catastrophic failure we had up on Burnham, I believe. And some of the other areas where we have better, we're in an earthquake prone area. Is it impacted by those soils and conditions?
Uh, yeah, it can be actually, you know, geologically, um, in the, in this, in this area, we do have that. Cause you've got sort of a typically have sort of a lighter sandy loam on top of this. Like I was about to say, this clay underneath. And what you get is, I don't know all the terminology very well, but you get that ability for that top surface to slide on top of the hard, mu- much less mobile surface. And so we are more susceptible to landslides. And then you see that, right? All around the, all around the Western Washington. So so in some cases, infiltrating water, stormwater is worse for the developed world, you know, our developed areas than actually taking the stormwater off the site and putting it into, into the system. So you really do, you know, there is no, I, I think it's a, you know, really is case, uh, site by site, case specific on how we should be handling stormwater. So there's not one size fits all for every project. And that's why this stuff gets real complicated.
No, in addition to what Carl just said, where he's, he's talked about all the various substrates, part of the planning process has to include that. Uh, otherwise you can end up having an issue with groundwater pollution. As he said, it's extremely complex.
Okay, so I want to keep us moving because it's getting kind of late, but thank you for all of your comments and I will make sure to do a good edit on the report when I bring it back to you in two weeks. Please feel free to email me. I'll have my email at the end of this presentation with any other comments as you as you move through the document. So I'm also going to be talking to you about climate action. The city council has prioritized the adoption of climate change language within the comprehensive plan this year, as well as language that would authorize a climate action plan. So we talked about this a little bit at the August eighteenth meeting. But for those of you that are new, we convened the CCC pack. It is a, the climate change, no wait, excuse me, the comprehensive plan. No, wait, comprehensive, climate change, comprehensive plan amendment committee, excuse me. Okay, CCC pack. And it was a group of twenty internal and external stakeholders. And this is kind of the schedule that we followed and the different topics that we, we covered. Within the CCC pack, we recruited several subject matter experts and had them present to our group. And then had the group kind of comment based on the topics, what they would suggest as a comprehensive plan amendment. So, um, yeah, the CCC pack learned about topics, including state and regional requirements. And then I have been drafting amendment to the comprehensive plan and then had the CCC pack give feedback and added some edits. And then now we're in this legislative process to adopt the amendment. Um, so just for con- context around what we learned within the CCC pack, we talked about what climate change is and why it's important to address it. We heard from PSRC about regional approaches to climate change adaptation and mitigation. We talked about building codes and energy conservation and generation. We also talked about transportation and land use. And then we finished it up with presentation from the state and the county on statewide approaches and waste management. So after each of these, excuse me, I'll go back to this one. So after each of these sessions, I asked the CCC pack to send suggestions for goals and policies that they would like to see in the comprehensive plan as part of our kind of climate change movement and this council priority. And so I collected all of those. We had over forty submissions. So I collected all the feedback from the CCC pack that's documented in the initial meeting summary and findings, which was part of the council packet for that August eighteenth meeting. Oh, excuse me. No, it's on the website for the CCC pack. I don't think I had that together for that August eighteenth meeting. Excuse me. I reviewed all the feedback for the highest priority topics and strategies. So you know, there's forty different goals and policies that I was given. And then I kind of sorted them into sorted them by comprehensive plan uh, element topic, and then kind of saw what came up the most. And then I distilled those priorities into a set of goals and policies to, to include in the comprehensive plan this year. So the scope of this is fairly narrow. And when we look at the proposed language, I want you all to, uh, keep that in mind. The idea behind the CCC pack and the amendment of this year is to include climate change goals in the comprehensive plan and to authorize adoption of, or the development of a climate action plan. It isn't to overhaul the comprehensive plan completely because at present, our comprehensive plan doesn't contain any language related to climate change mitigation or, or adaptation. And it doesn't authorize a climate action plan. So the scope of the amendment this year is fairly narrow, but it can still be really potent and effective. So any questions? Though, there was a lot of information very quickly. Um, any questions about the CCC pack process or the scope of what the comp, the comp plan amendment is for this year?
Roxanne, I have a question for you. Uh, why was the issue of a non-motorized transportation such as bicycles, pedestrians, scooters and the like not addressed in this?
Again, it is a narrow scope. We are trying to just get climate change into the comprehensive plan and authorize a climate action plan. So once the climate action plan is in the comprehensive plan, you know, we already have an RFP out for a climate consultant, and we're working towards getting a climate action plan developed. We, we thought it would be more appropriate to authorize a climate action plan, develop the climate action plan, and then based on recommendations from this thorough study by a climate consultant, then roll more robust amendments into the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update. So if we're just, because right now we don't have a ton of, you know, kind of like specialized information about how Gig Harbor can best address the climate change emergency. We would just kind of be shooting in the dark with like what we think is right. So getting the climate action plan in place and adopting it and then rolling that into the twenty twenty four update just made a lot more sense from, you know, and uh, from a planning perspective.
Well, maybe this is a question that's, that's more pertinent to the transportation part of the comprehensive plan. But Carl or Roxanne, do we have a bicycle pedestrian path plan in the city?
Oh, yeah, we do. Commissioner Krosik, actually, uh, as part of that transportation update, transportation plan update that we did in twenty eighteen, which was called, that was called Gig on the Go. We did, there was a sub, there was sort of an appendix to that plan. Actually, it's not an appendix to the plan necessarily, but there was a, there was a part, it was a, there was another study done that was, that was solely focused on multimodal transportation. And, uh, and that included, of course, pedestrian bikes, trails and the like. So we, I could certainly, we could share that with you, Commissioner Krosik, if you are interested in it.
Absolutely. Yeah, Carl, definitely. I am interested in that. I've, I've written a couple of those plans for other jurisdictions. And so I'd like to see what the city has.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that shared out with the, with the whole planning commission, actually. Tomorrow, we'll get that out to y'all.
Thank you.
Good question though. Um, any other questions before we kind of dive into the language? Okay, great. So, um, I know this is kind of small. It's a little bit messy, but hopefully you'll be able to see it in your council packet. So this is the proposed comp plan amendment language. Everything that is underlined was suggested by the CCC pack at the August twenty third kind of conclusion wrap up meeting that we had. So this is proposed to go into the environment element, chapter five. So goal, the goal is develop and adopt a climate action plan. And then within that, there are several policies to kind of guide the high priorities from the CCC pack that they wanted to see in the climate action plan and within the comp plan. So developing a greenhouse gas emission inventory, that's kind of the baseline for most climate action plans that I've seen around the state. Prioritizing electrification, that was a high priority for a lot of the CCC pack members. Um, and there's also already a priority for city assets, including the city fleet. So that could be, you know, an easy win. Consider climate change in planning processes. That's kind of a potent way to make sure that climate change adaptation and mitigation is considered as we move forward so that this isn't a static kind of goal. And then coordinate climate change planning with relating, related planning processes. So this means that when we're doing, you know, stormwater management action planning, when we're doing transportation planning, we're kind of required to look at it from a climate change adaptation and mitigation lens. Yeah, Commissioner Jordan?
Hey, this is great. Um, and full disclosure, I, I helped a little bit. Uh, I was on the, the CCC. On policy five point five two, we talk about implement energy efficiency improvements and work to transition from fossil fuels used to electrified energy sources. Uh, and my other, my day job, we've moved away from electrified because there's all sorts of other fuels, electric. One, but there's, you know, methanol and hydrogen and a couple. So I wonder if there would, could be like green fuels or, or some other, um, and not just electric.
Or just non-fossil fuel?
Yeah. Just an, just an idea.
Okay. I, I, I tend to not like language like green, which can be interpreted in so many different ways. But if you find a good term that kind of captures what you're, because we are just, you know, this is live and I'd love to see what you have going on in your kind of day to day work. If you want to email me some terminology, I would really love to review it.
And I, I just want to, I, I just want to note and be careful that, you know, we, we're, we're presenting this language here to, you know, to the full commission. And while Commissioner Jordan, I think it's a great idea to look at that. It would be interesting to hear from other commissioners on, on their thoughts on, on making a change such as that to bring back to, uh, to the commission at the hearing.
Are you referring to just that particular topic, Carl, or across the board?
I'm just, yeah, I was just, uh, just on Commissioner Jordan's comment. I think it's a, I think it's really a good comment. And I think it's certainly relevant, pertinent here, but I would like to hear, if we could hear from some other commissioners on that, that would be great. Cause I, you know, don't want to just be making changes without everybody sort of in agreement that we, that we do that.
Thank you, Carl.
Well, I, I would chime in and I, I agree essentially with what I believe Jordan is saying. I have always believed it is extremely unwise for governments at any level to push electric only. One of the issues we have now is we're virtually a hundred percent reliant on fossil fuels. Now they want to make us a hundred percent reliant on electric when there are multiple other energy sources out there. And as a society, we would be much better off to have a variety of energy sources for transportation, building, heating, cooling, and so on, available at our disposal for use.
Yeah, um, I would tend to disagree with Larry on that one. I don't think when we talk about electrification, we're talking about something that's going to happen in the next ten years. It's going to take quite a while, but I think the idea is you start and do what you can. And over time, the, the idea of getting off of fossil fuels is a, is completely necessary in time. I mean, I, I get it. We're still using tons of fossil fuel. We have to use that, but we also need to look at what's, what else need, what's happening and around us and start to take the steps that are going to mitigate that, that, uh, those impacts. So in, in the literature, in all the, uh, many of the plans that I've seen, electrification is, it's not a it's almost a given in many of the documents that I've read about climate change and how to deal with it. I would agree, if Jordan has a better word, I, a better thing for alternate kind of fuels, I would say, uh, maybe consider putting it in a separate, uh, policy break. But electrification is really, uh, the standard there. Everyone is trying to push us, push cities and counties and all of us to, you know, reduce fossil fuel use and electrification is it's, that is, that is where we're heading as, uh, in the United States, I think. We're going toward heat pumps, we're going toward he, uh, hot water heaters that are driven by electricity or a lot of things like that. And of course, it's not coming tomorrow. It's not coming next year, but it's coming. And I think we got to recognize it in our climate action plan or our comprehensive plan, that this is a very serious area to look at. That's my opinion on it, at least.
Commissioner Snodgrass, what do we know this?
I like the idea of wording that does not tie us into one particular type of alternative non-fossil fuel. It, by changing that wording, we aren't saying that electric or electrified isn't an option. And it may well be the first easiest option as an alternative to fossil fuels, but just like. Electrification isn't tomorrow, we don't know what other technologies are also. Developing and maybe valid options. So I like the idea of having wording that doesn't tie us into one particular thing.
Commissioner Jordan, you want to comment some more?
Yeah, just real quick, I just quickly looked at some of our other, uh, some of my other uh, work. We've used uh, renewable energy sources and we've used low car as a, as a suggestion to replace the word electrified. Or low or no carbon energy sources, just a couple of examples that we've used at um, at the port.
Thank you. How do people feel about um, renewable uh, energy sources? And maybe calling that policy something like differ diversified energy sources?
I think that's a very good way to go. Yeah, I think we, if we broaden it, we're certainly not going to exclude uh, electrical uh. Greater use of electricity, but uh, as, as I think Commissioner Snodgrass said, there are other potential technologies out there that might come to the forefront. And we don't want to exclude those.
I like the term diversified in there.
Great.
Agreed.
Okay. Um. Any other comments on any of these policies?
Uh, yeah, Roxanne, I have a couple of other things too.
Great.
I want, I'm really happy that the staff has done this work so far at the initiation of the council. It's a, it's really important issue, and I think this is a, to, this is kind of for the planning commission also, this is a very important first step. Uh, Roxanne rightly said, this is narrowly, uh, it's a narrow approach. I, I personally might have broadened it a bit more, but I get where she's going, where we're trying to um. Get this in, into a comp plan. And then the, the more, the heavy lifting and the details get fleshed out downstream a little bit. So that's, that's okay, it's high level, but her proposal in, in my mind hits the right. High level elements, the things like the inventory, the mitigation strategies for buildings, transportation, natural systems, that's all really good. So it's there, it's, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty bare bones, but it's got the right, uh, it's got the right words in it. From my perspective, so I'm happy with that. There are a couple of edits that I was thinking about Roxanne, I wasn't sure that you would. Want to discuss them here because it's, um, or maybe they're big enough that I need to bring it up now because. Other council members may or may not agree with me, so.
Yeah, I think it's worth having that discussion.
Okay. The very first paragraph talks about um, equitable community outreach and education. And uh, I think um, from my analysis that the term equity and social justice is really. The term of choice these days that talks about equity. I would propose to the group that we change the word equitable to equity and social justice, comma, community outreach and education. Equitable community outreach kind of means, well, everybody's outreach the same way. And I think that term needs to be a little broader to talk about bringing um, climate, making sure climate change works for. All levels of our, of our community, lower income, middle income, disadvantaged communities, so on and so forth. That's kind of what social equity and social justice means to me. That's my first point. And John, we can discuss these as we go along, or I can do my spiel and then we can come back to them, however you want. All right, I'll, I'll say that, that, that means continue, Bob. Uh, our 55.1 talks about, you added a term in there that I'm really not very familiar with in terms of vehicle miles traveled. For trips originating within the city. I am not an expert in vehicle miles travel analysis, but uh, I'm sure that our consultant will be. And so my thought was to, let's not restrict it to trips originating within the city for now. Let's uh, let that flesh itself out as a consultant digs into it more deeply, because. If you're going out of the city, you got to come back sometime, if you're commuting to wherever you're committing. And I'm not sure if that term means what we want it to mean.
Um, I think that, if I remember correctly, I think that came out of an anxiety around trips. On uh, SR16 being included in our greenhouse gas emissions. Um, so. I, I agree that I think the consultant will make a good um, call on that. But that came out of, I think, uh, someone on the CCC pack being uh, anxious about, you know, our. Per capita VMT being super high because it was including SR16 uh, commuting. Uh, I don't think that would ever be the case in a climate action plan, and certainly we could be in control of that as uh, the people kind of like guiding the consultant, but. I, I can, I can remove it if it would make you more comfortable.
I think that's going to play itself out over time, but I get the 16 one, and you know, all those people that get, get in charge to Gig Harbor, right? Hey, you're just passing through, guys, don't, don't bother me.
Yeah. Um, does anyone else have any thoughts on that language in 551?
I think, oh, go ahead.
But John, I think vehicle miles traveled will in some ways uh, be affected by uh, bicycle trips and, and. That kind of other non-vehicle movement through the city, so that would be. A bicycle trip would mean that that's less, one less vehicle trip to account to uh, the greenhouse gas emissions. So that might come up in that discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things I was trying to get at there.
Precisely.
Uh, last thing, uh, Ro- Roxanne, policy 553 and 554 seem almost the same. Uh, especially the, you know, the headers. I would propose that you might want to um, merge those two together into uh, one policy with a couple of paragraphs. And um, also consider a third section to that being. Uh, collaborating with and partnering with the regional and state and local jurisdictions as another element of that uh. Planning process, um, intergovernmental activity. And I'll tell you why, uh, commissioners, I think that uh, as Roxanne knows now, because we've, we've gotten, there's some amazing work that's occurred across the state already. And in cities and, and regional organizations in the state. We don't, we can gain a lot by working and capturing lessons learned from. The city of Tacoma, Pierce County, the Puget Sound Regional Council. A commission and our other fellow uh, cities around the area, so. Um, I really think we need to make that a, a, a part of our planning. Um, it's not just us here alone, we need to take advantage and work carefully with those. Cities and counties around us, because it, you know, greenhouse gas emissions don't really have a, a sense for where your city, the city borderlines uh, with a county.
And I think that's particularly true with Pierce County in the urban growth area.
That's what I got to say, Roxanne and John.
Okay, thank you.
You, Commissioner Saltus.
I want to go back to your first point there about uh, uh. Refresh my memory there, uh, you were going to change the word equitable and have community justice or?
Uh, equity and social justice.
Equity and social justice, thank you. What's uh, what's the group's feeling about that? Uh, Commissioner Snodgrass, any thoughts there?
Mostly from my writer's brain. It doesn't flow as well with equity and social justice, and I would, I would ask. What is gained by adding the social justice aside from its common terminology for certain things?
Well, I think what, when you describe it, equitable is um, I think maybe a, a little more of a generic word. Social justice and equity has a certain meaning, meaning uh, to me at least, and I think others as well. To uh, extend uh, the planning and the benefits of a. Uh, climate change activity to all elements of our, of our community. Uh, many of which have been sort of um. Left out of a lot of decision-making over the years, and so. It's all part of the, you know, we're trying to make sure that everybody in our community uh, receives these benefits and. That's kind of the term of choice. Uh, it's not equitable, it's uh, equity and social justice. And I would say that the Lakewood uh, Development uh, Director that has sponsored the Climate Change Comprehensive Plan in Lakewood. Says that is an extremely important part of their plan, that section. He was adamant that that was very important for them getting uh, council buy-in for their comprehensive plan to. Address that particular issue. So I thought it made sense to make sure that it has a sort of identity of its own.
I, I would just simply say, I, I don't agree with that language. I, I don't know that it is appropriate here. And it's appropriate in other areas of, of city efforts, but not here for, for a climate action plan. I, I would even limit it to just community outreach and education.
Mr. Brown, any thoughts?
I'll pass on that.
Commissioner Jordan?
Um, I like where Commissioner Saltus is going. Um, I do think, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, justice. Needs, uh, you know, uh, climate change is, is, has an impact. I struggle in our community. Uh, with our, you know, the way our community, I mean, our community is much different than Lakewood, you know, as an example, but um, but. And then my writer's brain was kicking in too, so I was playing around with words about how, you know. Climate change adap- adaptation and community outreach and education in a, you know, in a. Social, uh, social justice diversity through its social justice diversity equity lens or something like that, that the end of the sentence. Um, but I, but I like where you're going. I, I agree, though, the flow gets a little messed up with um, Commissioner Saltus's uh, you know, language.
Thank you. Okay, Roxanne, I think we've, we've got a diversity of opinions here.
Yeah, so I think the um, the initial addition was to. Make sure that community outreach and education is equitable, and I think in a lot of um. In a lot of situations now, equitable collapses the ideas of equity and social justice to mean that. If something is equitable, that it is kind of, the, the benefits are divided proportionally to those who have experienced the most injustice. So I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Saltus is that. He'd like more of an emphasis on equity and social justice within the scope of climate change. Adaptation, not just the community outreach and education. Is that correct?
Right, in adaptation as well as in mitigation, but yeah.
Right, okay. So I think there's a way to um. Say that, you know, these um, to say that the climate change strategies. Um, would be mitigation and adaptation strategies would be um. Developed and implemented in an equitable and socially just way. I can tweak that a little bit, but would that sit well with everyone?
Commissioner Snodgrass?
I have a question for Commissioner Saltus. Did Lakewood have, do you have an example of their wording? That would help us come out with something that flows a little better, that encompasses the idea that. That people seem to be going for?
Yeah, I have the Lakewood plan, but I, I, it's, it's a hard copy, so it'd be kind of hard to pull it up right now. I could certainly share that with Roxanne if that would be of, of use for her to uh, look at. But I couldn't give it to you tonight to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can look it up as well. I'm, I'm sure, is it online? Is there a virtual?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I, I'll um, I'll see, try and check that out and see what, what they came up with. Um, but does the, what I talked about with kind of the intent, is that, that's kind of what you were going for? And would the commissioners agree that that could be uh, included in that uh, the paragraph under the goal a little bit better?
Commissioner Jordan, what's your thoughts?
Sorry, I was, I was looking for the Lakewood plan. Um, yeah, that, 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 that would work for me. I, 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 I'd like to see the language, but I think you get the uh, gist of what I was trying to say, Roxanne, so yeah.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Brown?
I don't have anything to add to this.
Okay, great. Um, well, it looks like we have um, yeah, some good commentary and um, I'm look forward to incorporating these edits and comments. Um. This is my uh, contact information. Uh, if you wanted, if you want to give me a call, I would use the mobile number. I'm, I'm not in the office um, as often as my colleagues. So um, yeah, feel free to call or email if you have any further comments. Yeah, Carl?
Uh, I just wanted to make sure, did we get through all three of Commissioner Saltus's ideas here? So we, we talked, we touched on social justice, but I think there was also this idea of removing for trips originating within the city. It's, I think there was sort of general consensus on that one. Um, but, or maybe unanimous consensus on maybe pulling that, but just to make sure.
Yeah, thank you, Carl.
This last one's a little bit bigger, I think, you know, combining two policies together, I, it sounds like a great idea. Um, and, and adding this other, this other piece, but just, you know, wanted to make sure we get buy-in from everybody that you, you want us to come back to you with that.
Thank you, Carl, sorry about that. So um, do we have, yeah, do we have consensus on removing trips originating within the city?
Or maybe do we have any objections to that?
Oh, yeah. Okay, great.
And if I could, keeping in mind, and it kind of plays into what we talked about a little bit, when Commissioner Saltus um. Uh, introduced the next idea of combining these two policies. And talking about intergovernmental coordination, right, and that climate change doesn't really see boundaries. I think part of the idea behind adding that originating within the city piece for greenhouse gas emissions as a, because it's a measure, we're trying to measure something within. Gig Harbor. Um, I think that also gets in not only SR16, but also within our UGA. Because what we have in Gig Harbor is, we have a lot of pass-through trips, right, for people who are, have a Gig Harbor zip code. And feel they live in Gig Harbor and they contribute to Gig Harbor in many ways. They also contribute greenhouse gas emissions by driving through and visiting the city. Um, and so I think this might have been, the thought here might have been one way of um, helping uh, this become more measurable. And again, that will come out in uh, the climate action plan, of course, um, and not necessarily um. Uh, doesn't necessarily need to be said probably in this comp plan. But I just wanted to throw it out there because I was thinking about it when, when Commissioner Saltus brought it up. I, I'm not saying that I think it's a bad idea to remove it, I just wanted to put that on the table as another consideration.
Thanks, Carl. Um, okay, so. I think, yeah, no objections to that. Um, and then as far as combining 553, 5 and 554, I think that would be pretty easy to do. Um, I think the um. The two parts of this came out with the CCC pack. Um. Uh. Because they wanted, they knew that there are all these different plans kind of coming down the pipeline, and they wanted to make sure that climate change planning was consistent. Um, but I think that that is captured within planning processes in 553. Um, do, uh, are there any objections to combining those, those two policies?
Commissioner Jordan is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
No worries. Um, uh. I feel, we don't have that document up anymore, but I think I can recall. It, it felt like the 554 was about like the city's planning process and 555 was about kind of coordination, the regional coordination, did I? Because. It, I, I like the idea of combining them, but if the intent is in the second to last one, what the city is going to do. And then in the last one is how we can be a regional part. what the city is gonna do, and then in the last one is how we can be a regional partner player, then, then I can get my head around them keeping them separate, but I'm just not sure if that was the intent or not.
Um, well, right now there isn't one about collaboration, because it, because um, one is, one is about like basically development processes. And then the other is about city kind of long-range planning processes. So it would be collapsing the um, two policies that are kind of about city processes, both development and long-range planning, and then adding one about regional collaboration.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. Any other comments to that effect? Any objections to that? Okay, great. Thank you, Carl, for bringing us back to that. Um, I had a long day. I was up at like five. Okay, um, now are we ready to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, so I think that's the end of the presentations then, Commissioner Crossick, it's uh, it's back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Roxanne, that was, that was very good and, and a very interesting material that you have there. So I think at this point, we're down to other business. Uh, that's, uh, the next meeting is Thursday, October twentieth. Uh, and uh, is there anything else that anybody wants to raise uh, before we adjourn? Jason?
Yeah, just a special thanks to staff. Um, these, these are great reports, great job. I, uh, I, as a staffer myself, I really appreciate the, the work and the long hours. So thank you very much.
You will find that the staff always does a wonderful job. That's uh, one of the pleasures of working with this group.
Sorry, my timesheet popped up. Michelle just showed me that.
Yeah, that's why I stopped the screen sharing.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, everyone.
I couldn't figure out what was going on there for a moment. I thought, oh, I thought you were bringing up some uh, spreadsheet that was gonna show up, some major climate change or, you know, greenhouse gas emissions. And then I saw that it was, yeah, it was your timesheet, which would have been interesting too, just a different topic, that's all.
Just being a dummy, I'm so sorry.
And all of that's contact information is in the binder that I sent the link to. So all of staff's contact information is in there if you ever need to get ahold of anybody.
Oh, in the, in the, in the planning commission binder?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So uh, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question. Uh, if, if commissioners want to propose items for the agenda for future meetings, how is that best handled? Is that best handled with a, an email to you, with an email to Carl and you, an email to Carl? What's the, what's your preferred protocol on that?
I'll defer to Carl and ask what the procedure in the past has been.
Yeah, it's a good question, Commissioner Brown. And uh, so that would be uh, through staff. Uh, and you could certainly um, include Commissioner Crossick in that, in that email. And we would uh, then need to take that through the city clerk and uh, up through the mayor in order to get it onto the agenda.
The, the mayor has to approve items that we want on the agenda? Really?
Yeah, so, so this is how, so this kind of comes back to this idea of the guidelines and the bylaws we were talking about earlier. And one thing that I think Josh didn't touch on is that the idea here is that the planning commission is not meant to drive uh, our work, um, staff's work. Um, that really need, that really does come down from uh, from the council uh, through the mayor uh, and city administrator. And so by bringing something, by putting something on the agenda, you're, you're essentially, um, you're essentially telling the staff that they're going to do this work and that has uh, budgetary implications. Uh, and it affects other workflow processes. Uh, and so not to say that it's a bad thing to do, and I'm not trying to take any wind out of your sails at all, Commissioner Brown. So I don't think, you know, it, there certainly is the ability for the planning commission to do this. In fact, the planning commission by code can recommend um, uh, changes or amendments to Title seventeen. It's in, you know, it's in G, it's in Gig Harbor Municipal Code seventeen, one hundred. But there has to be some process in order for you to get staff to actually work on that thing. And it's not the planning commission's role to dictate staff's work. That's, that's all. As happy as I am to do the work for you, and I, we have no problem doing it uh, as long as we can fit it into our, our workflow. We got a lot of other things going on. There's a lot of priorities that the city has right now, so it does need to be driven by council.
But Carl, just to do have like, say we want to have a discussion on something. That wouldn't necessarily involve any staff uh, activity at all, just to say, hey, we're gonna talk about this issue and see where we go from here. Are, are you saying everything has to go?
Oh, okay, no, that's fine. If, if it's just us, if it's just a topic that you want to have a discussion about on, at a meeting, um, I don't see any problem with you having that discussion at one of your, at one of your meetings, yeah. And that can be part of this other business item. It's not really an agenda item that staff is bringing to present to you to get any kind of recommendation or ask you to study or, or provide feedback on. If it's a topic that you want to have a discussion on, I, I don't believe that there should be any problem with that. I would still, if we still have to create this agenda though, staff creates this agenda, so that item would still have to come to us in order to go on, you know, if it's gonna go on this other business. Otherwise, Commissioner Brown, if you had something that you wanted to discuss tonight, let's just say, and you wanted to bring it up now, this is kind of that time for good of the order, other business prior to adjournment. And uh, kind of, that's what we're doing right now, in fact.
My, my point, my point is really quite different.
I think it is.
There might, there, there might be issues that I would like to propose that we all discuss. And I would like those issues to be identified in advance of the meeting. So people might form an opinion or give them some thought, or maybe even do some research on them. And then we could discuss them in an intelligent way, not at uh, nearly eight o'clock after three hours of uh, of a meeting. So uh, that's what I'm asking about it. I, I will forward to you uh, proposed agenda items and you can do with them as you feel you must. But I hope that we'll be able to see them on agendas in advance of meetings at some point.
Yeah, un- understood, Mr. Brown. And you know, another way to do what you're describing is to go through uh, council. Um, you know, and get it to, get it to a council member and have a council member champion that idea to make sure and get it back to the planning commission. Because remember that the planning commission's role is to look at and study amendments to either comp plan or any kind of legislative amendment or anything else that the count, the city council determines is something that you should be looking at for the city. They're, they're, they're the electeds, you're appointed by them to do this work. So that's kind of, you know, that's sort of the hierarchy, I guess you will, in how this works.
I, I'm, I'm becoming more and more aware of the hierarchy. Thank you.
Carl, how about this is a thought, is that maybe if one of us has an idea that we want to discuss, that we put it on the agenda strictly for discussion purposes and the staff does not have to do any work. But if any of us want to do any research or look into it further, then we can do so. And then that might be the germination of an idea that goes to the city council. And then we ask the city council uh, for permission to use staff time uh, to further a particular thought that we have and take it from there.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's a good thought, Commissioner Crossick, and it's certainly something that we can um, we can try and run up, we can run that up the flagpole. I'll just say that in the past, that is not something that, at least in Gig Harbor, uh, we have done. And I'm not sure that I've seen it at other jurisdictions, definitely not other jurisdictions I've worked at personally. Has it ever worked that way? Uh, but I'm not saying that it's a, a bad idea. But also keep in mind that these meetings have to be staffed. Um, and so by talking about things um, that aren't on the agenda or weren't, or weren't um, uh, required of you by, or yeah, required of you by uh, city council. Um, you are using staff time just by the nature of us being here and, and running the meeting. So it is, it is costing taxpayers dollars, right, to, to have us here, just to put it bluntly. Um, but I still, again, I don't think it's, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I don't think it's something we shouldn't explore and have a discussion about. I'm certainly happy to have that discussion and, and figure out if there is, is an avenue to, for doing something like that.
Well, may, maybe that's an agenda item for next meeting is what's the best way to have a process for dealing the, with these kinds of things that maybe some of us see as a serious concern in the city and that we'd like to bring up.
If I could, if I could, Commissioner Crossick, would it be okay if we, if staff, if I, if, if Michelle and I researched that a little bit with the clerk, uh, city administrator, uh, and got back to you at our first meeting in November? I think it would be our first meeting in November. The next meeting is gonna be the, the hearing on these comp plan amendments. So uh, I, I, I think that it might be best for that to be the only agenda item. Unless you feel otherwise, we can certainly bring that back at that meeting too. Have to do it either way.
I think it's appropriate that we just stick with the public hearing for next uh, meeting. And I, I'd be perfectly comfortable with you doing a little bit more in-house research on this and bringing it back to us in November.
Will do, Chair.
Okay. Anything else to come before the group tonight? Hearing nothing, uh, uh, the chap, the, the chair entertains a motion for adjournment.
It's a little move.
Seconded. Seconded, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the motion is approved and we are adjourned. Carl and Michelle, I, I got a couple of technical issues about uh, handling uh, uh, the meeting here uh, with the program that we are using. So if you could just stay out for a minute, I'd just like to ask you a couple of questions.
End meeting or leave meeting?
Of course. Michelle, can you turn the recording off, please?